I just don't have a sick girl.
What's his name?
Right, what's his name?
He wrote me a ticket last week. Disrespect intended.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Glad to have you all, everyone here in this November 7th Board Supervisors Meeting called to order at this time. Mr. Gaines won't be able to attend today, so you just have to deal with us. If, Mr. Slay, if you would mind doing an invitation, we appreciate it.
Shall we join Gaines first, Father? This is the date you've made, we want to rejoice and be glad, and Father, thank you for the privilege that we have to come before you now, acknowledge that you're here with us, Father, to ask for your blessing upon our time, Father, to seek your wisdom, to seek your counsel. Father, help us to make good and wise decisions that benefit all of our citizens. Thank you, Father, for this place that you've given for us, this government that you have established here, the authority that you've given these gentlemen. I pray, Father, that you'll bless them, Father, that you'll give them everything that they need today to seek your face and to make decisions that are in accordance with your will. We pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, we have a public comment.
There's not who we're.
Call. Okay. J S and H, come forth and talk to us about the new courthouse facility and Mr. Minter Facility.
Good morning.
Morning, Gordon.
I know y'all wondering if this day's ever gonna get here, but let's start off with the courthouse facility. And just to recap, the last time I was here was in August, August 15th, and we reviewed, if you remember, the lobby layouts and some revised elevations and changed the roof design. And then at that time, we talked about completing the drawings in October and getting ready to go forward. And that's where we're at. We have finished the drawings. At that time, the cost on the project was around eighteen and a half million dollars, and what we were interested in trying to do is see if we could lower that. We have, where we stand right now, as we completed the drawings, we, in addition to doing our own cost estimate, we hired an independent cost estimator, just to make sure we're staying online. We got that cost back recently, and it's a little bit higher than what we really wanted it to be. Right now, as it stands, the building cost is about sixteen million dollars, but the site is still hurting us. Buster and his group have done a great job, and, you know, we expect them to do miracles, and just a little bit shorter of miracles, but that site cost is around two and a half million, so we're still around eighteen, seven. And we would like, we think we can reduce that cost by making a few more changes to the drawings. And by that, I mean, we're not changing the floor plans, any of that, all that is required, but we're looking at some details, some finishes, and possibly some alternates, just to make sure that we can be closer to getting it down, closer to eighteen million when we did this. That'll take a couple more weeks, but moving forward, what we would like to do, our recommendation is this, we would like to go ahead and, we talked to some contractors, we talked to subcontractors about bidding climate and when's gonna be the best time to bid. Our experience indicates that bidding at the end of the year generally results in some higher prices. So what we'd like to do, at least our recommendation at this point, is to go ahead and advertise on December 8th, December 8th and December 15th, which are the two required, and even go the 3rd, just to make sure that everybody's aware of it on December 23rd, and then take bids on January 31st. We just feel like that with what all goes on during the end of the year, hunting with subs, subs, that kind of thing, we would get better prices by going ahead and bidding it after the first of the year than trying to rush it through the first part of the end of this year. But we want to go ahead and try and set those dates or set a date for bidding according to your wishes, and go ahead and get this, and so we can get the prices in and review them and make a agnostication on when to start. If that's where we're at here right now, I can go through any questions you may have on it at this point.
Yeah, say we do this, and we take this January, what is our timeframe?
For construction?
Yeah.
I think it's fifteen months is what we're estimating.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean it can't, it can, it can be done quicker than that, but what we find is that it usually takes longer rather than shorter, because they may have range delays, and then if you rush through it too much, it pushes the prices higher. Fifteen months is a reasonable time.
Is that the court and the misdemeanor facility?
No, the misdemeanor, and I can talk about it, I've, what we've done with the misdemeanor, we've had several meetings with the sheriff and his deputies, and we've done some preliminary study. We actually did a diagram to get it, we're at about fifteen thousand square feet on the misdemeanor facility, which is, Sheriff, if you have a chance to review those plans, and you may want to comment, which would accommodate one hundred and thirty people, and that's basically two misdemeanors, trustees, and all the amenities that have to go with that requirements. Now, with the misdemeanor facility, its construction costs are gonna be less because it's just, it's not like a jail, but it still has some correctional requirements that make it higher. But what we were looking at on that was approximately four to four and a half million dollars. Now, the other issue with it's the same as on the courthouse, the site cost. We don't, it's just not a good area in this area or economic to put the site. We've looked at several potential sites for this. I think the most desirable is right behind the jail. And what we're thinking that maybe we can do to save some money, if you're familiar with the jail, there's a paved area behind, on the north side of the jail, behind the kitchen area, but, you know, and the road runs through there. We've gotta maintain access for fire department and also for service, eighteen wheelers, but we think if we can take up some of that area and then have the back part, there's a twenty-foot drop back there, but we would, instead of trying to fill in, we think it would be less costly to build it on stilts back there, is what we're thinking right now. But you're still looking at a lot of site costs, so that project possibly anywhere up to a million dollars if you were to fill it in. And then you've gotta reroute that creek and things like that. Now, we did look at where the modular buildings are to the north of that, you know, where you've, I don't know, yes, what, one of those?
Trustee house.
Yeah, trustee house now. Possibly tearing that down and putting it there, and that actually may be a little bit less site cost, but it's not enough room unless you, unless you look at possibly tearing down the annex to the courthouse, to put it on one story. And everything we've looked at and what's typically done, the most efficient from administrative and from administrative costs is to keep it on one story. When you go to two stories, you've gotta add in elevators, you've gotta have stairs, then you've gotta have additional personnel, and I hope I'm speaking correctly toward that. So it would be either pre-engineered building or load bearing with wood trusses, so it's not like, it's not like the courthouse, which is steel frame, got heavier weight. So it's a fairly economical building, but with the trustees, you still have to have concrete block in that area, now, in the, I mean, not in trustees, but in the misdemeanor. Now, as we go to the trustees, we may can get down to just sheet rock, that type thing, to save on cost.
And I guess your timeframe on that's what, I mean, can you ballpark me a timeframe?
We have not, all we've done is studies, we haven't done a design. It'd take two, three months to do the design and to build it, would be probably about twelve months to do that. So all we've done at this point is studies. Mainly because I know that that's, again, probably higher than what we was originally thinking, but I don't believe you can build that with the site any less than that.
Is that including site work too, that number you gave us?
Probably closer to five million with site work, is what I'm thinking.
Always something hidden.
Well, the problem at this point is just like on the courthouse facility, you really don't know what you got until you start designing it, and we don't have, I don't think there's a survey, y'all hadn't done a, you don't, I couldn't find any topos back around that area behind the jail. You go up to a point where the grinder area.
We would need to get in there.
Yeah. So it's really hard, but we did look at it, and we did, we took a satellite survey, and it's about a twenty-foot depression back there, so you can see if you're filling twenty feet of dirt, you're more the expert, Buster, than I am. It's not cheap.
Site problems, site work is a problem with everything now.
Well, there's just, there's no places, you may remember, there's just, there's just no places that have a gully in it.
Right.
On this, in this area.
Right.
And my understanding is, now, we did not look at any sites anywhere else other than right around this area, but from administrative and handling of prisoners, it's like you're trying to keep everything right in this one area, and it's just, it can be done, it's just costs at this point. Do you have anything you might add to that, Sheriff?
No, just, again, it's gonna be way above, but, you know, we hope we can get by with it, and, you know, and then, I also got a couple of things, like adding about seven hundred square foot office space for dedications, that's a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand, and then stores, eating, high vehicles, transport buses, I sit outside, I live there too, so even if you just take those out, they still will be, you know, way up there above what we had.
Yeah, that's, that's really small from the big picture.
My only suggestion is, you know, we could go ahead and look at it on stilts, or, you know, I'd be willing to, you know, use the inmates if I'm able to, and, you know, the canned equipment, start trying to get Buster to tell us what, you know, we'll start putting dirt in and spread it, and give me, you know, a little time, see if we can do some of the basic dirt work ourselves, and save some money on that, and get a little bit closer to, you know, prepared.
Yeah.
I guess maybe.
My suggestion too is that, you know, if we're gonna look at this back here, let's go ahead and look at all of it, that's about one of the only places we have to expand is out the back here, and what it takes for here, and clean all of it up, and then look forward to initial work done on that spot, not just with jail, for anything.
Right.
And that, that may be a good plan, because if you don't have to, what we were looking at with the misdemeanor was having it at the same, the finished floor level, basically the same level as the jail, but if you don't have to fill all that up, if you can have a separate facility down lower back there, then, and obviously, you're not having to pay for all that dirt.
Well, I think we were kinda hoping that we would be able to hit both at once, so we can just do one bond rather than have to do issuance costs on two, but we're gonna miss that now, so, yeah, we'll have time to take our time, get it right, whatever it is we need to do. I mean, Lynn's here, he can update us on the finances of it, but I think that was the thought originally. Yeah, I thought that's kinda was the goal, to get it all in one package.
Well, let's still try to strive for that goal before we decide to go ahead and hear it from Lynn first, and the timing and all that kind of stuff, and then find out from Buster what kind of field, quality of field dirt you gotta have back there for your, to get it to a certain, I know you gotta have good red dirt and stuff like that underneath, but, you know, just look at, you know, but push your head with it, by all means.
I agree with Bob, to push your head with it and see if we can wrap it together.
You've got two years from the, is it authorization to issuance, two years?
Three years.
Three years.
Three years.
Still, I can't see it.
I would think you'd be able to.
You've got time on that with issuance costs, if you're okay, I think you're okay there.
Well, the thing is, by the time, I mean, you're, you're, we're holding up somewhat on the justice building and all, so they give you some time to work on this other too, so it still may be.
Yeah, I really would like to push to try to get that done in one day, to have it, because once we start putting stuff off, then we're gonna wind up in putting it off and putting it off and.
Well, that's on the drawback too, like, I have this account hanging around four seventy-five, because I know I have about five hundred days in jail, so just about twenty-five days. But though, I could pack more in if I have to, but thank you to Michael Gis, and the judges work with us real good, so we've got a pretty good process to getting them in and out, getting them out of jail, into prison, or get somebody done sixty days or ninety days misdemeanor sentence, we talk with the cities and they give them away.
So even if we're still several months out from being able to have our design ready, we'll still be okay?
The building design is very simple, but again, it's the site, and we don't, we don't really know what the best way to approach the site right now, and its first step is to get Buster authorized to do some surveys, and then you need some soils tests, but again, what takes time is trying to figure out the most economical way to put it on that site or what that site is, because as you've seen on this courthouse, we have gone all around the world trying to figure out how to reduce the cost on the site, and you just, you know, you got retaining walls, you gotta have the whole back of dirt and things of that nature. It's nothing that's, you know, aesthetic, it's all functional, and utilities, you've got utilities back there, you put it down on the, down lower, then you gotta get, you know, go someplace to the sewer, hopefully having to have a pumping station or pump it back up the hill. Those are all things that, until we know exactly where all that is, it takes time.
And also, one of the drawbacks to putting it on stilts is I'd have exercise yard before, so when we're gonna put the exercise yard, and they said we just put several things we're gonna work through.
How big is that yard gonna be? Do you, do you need some kind of authorization to Buster now to move forward on his studies?
If y'all wanna move in at Mister Minter facility, yes, sir, he needs to.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah, he definitely needs to do that.
Is that the only site, I mean, that's really the most logical place for it, isn't it?
Well, the only, to the only thing I'm just thinking for down the road, the only other place we can put it, is if you walk in the entrance to the sheriff's office, you'll see to the right, there's a fenced in area with a eagle right there. I said we really need to save that for steel and concrete jail cells down the road and add them to jail again. We need to save that, so that way it's connected to the building, the food, the medical, everything can go through there, so we really need to save that spot.
Right.
And since this is a low, a minimum security type, and you can ask him, we're trying to get this cheap, I'm talking about for the trustees, it's gonna be sheet rock walls and a concrete floor, like a big dayroom area.
Right.
So that's really the only option we have to go past.
And that, that slope, we looked at that, I mean, that's fifteen-foot drop too. If you, if you go out there, it drops down toward the end, but, so it's just, this is just a hill of area right now.
Well, if we need to, we need to go ahead, I mean, I think if we need to authorize Mr. Parker to move forward, then.
At least get some studies back to you to let you know what you're sitting on.
Yeah, you know, I think from a functional standpoint, that's the preferred, the preferred area for, you know, going back and forth to the jail. I just don't know of any other sites.
Anything over to the east is too far, right.
Yeah, I think that's what he was wanting to save. For saving that spot.
Yeah, he's talking about right back here, I'm talking about.
I'm talking about connecting to the jail. Now, there's one over here, or this back corner or something, I'd be a little worried if there's no one in there.
Yeah, I'm just asking, yeah.
Well, we did look even at, in this, but it's costly, you know, just building over the parking lot that's out there, taking, but if you are putting it in the parking lot, it means that then you lose, I don't know, sixty, seventy parking spaces. Again, that would be, from a construction standpoint, probably the least costly, but then you gotta come up with parking, which, parking use is cheaper than constructing buildings, but again, you gotta have some land, someplace to put that. And those are potential options, and again, we would wanna get Buster's opinion, his team's.
Lord, we wanna put that under additional business coming down the road to authorize my custody.
Definitely.
We tried to look at just about every potential site over there, but every one, some of them have pluses and some of them have minuses, and it's just.
Well, I think if we authorize them to do this, and y'all can, any potential area, then he'll be ready to look at it all at the same time.
Well, something else, you know, just looking down the road, we need to look at, not only on this misdemeanor facility, but also let's go ahead and look at some parking maybe down the road, and maybe eventually we could get a parking lot down there, I could move all my employees down there to park down there, and have more room up here.
Maybe we oughta fill that in for parking and put this somewhere else. We'd still be filling in, would be less expensive.
I'm talking about that whole area back there, we need to look at some down, because that's the only way we got to make it grow, as far as canning, canvases.
Right, yeah, okay.
Add it to additional business.
Yeah, we're gonna put it on for additional business.
What I would like to get from y'all today, though, is consideration or authorization to go ahead and advertise on December 8th and 15th, I believe it was, those are Thursdays that they, they run for the courthouse, if you're so inclined.
Additional business too.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the bid opening of?
January 31st.
Okay.
So if I tell my contractor friends who keep calling me on a somewhat daily basis, the date they can pick up the specs, the plans will be?
It'd be December 8th.
December 8th, right.
Was that the, yeah, eight, yes, sir. And we've talked to, we've got several that are very interested, that calling us too, wondering when this is gonna be available.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I have some too, so, probably some same ones.
Probably is.
So there is interest in it, it's just, what makes up the price is all the subs, they make up eighty percent of that, and that's what we're concerned about, because they're the people that we don't get direct contact with. Generals, we are in contact with directly, and they have different opinions about bidding in their, when they're busy and all that kind of stuff. That does affect the bid a lot.
Okay, any other questions?
Appreciate it, Carl.
Thank you. We'll get that part done for you. Okay, next comes Lynn Norris. Good to see you, Lynn, hadn't seen you in a while. She's bringing some good news.
We do have good news. Looking, looking at your project, both projects, it fits within your current labors, no tax increases, and it fits within the cash flow, so we, I feel real good about that, have very conservative interest rates projected at this point in time, not knowing when we might go out. But for clarification purposes, from the intent resolution, you have two years to issue the bonds after that. From the construction side of it, you have three years to complete the project. Now, that doesn't mean that you, you know, have to have it completely done in three years, but what we'd have to do is look at the arbitrage rules, because this involves arbitrage rules, and we'd probably, to err on the safe side, put whatever construction funds that was not spending that three-year period into a non-interest bearing of can. So you don't have to pay money back to the Internal Revenue Service, but you can't continue, you don't have over five years, you gotta, you gotta have a reasonable expectation to spend the money within three years, so, but we'll, we'll work through that. The, both the misdemeanor and the chance for building fits within a one issuance if we can reasonably expect to spend the money in that time.
Key thing you just said was no tax increase, we can handle it.
No tax increase.
Make sure Chuck got that.
But Lynn, that number just grew a couple million. You feel confident about that?
Pardon?
I think that number's grown a couple million since we started.
Well, from the numbers I heard, it's a little tight, but it seems probably worth.
But they're trying to tighten it up too.
Right, right. They need to, but.
Okay, yeah.
You got, you got that, that's, that's the one page, one page. Any questions there that shows the methodology as to how I went through to get there? Oh, yes, you could go twenty, go to the left. Now, what I tried to do there, looking at where your existing revenue stream would take you for future projects, and the fifteen years would give all your local banks the opportunity to participate in the foundation. Any or all of them together, maybe one bank or all of them, that, that, there is an appetite there in their market to buy fifteen-year paper, so we can go, we can go to the life of the bill. Right, yes, so twenty years is certainly. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I think we all understand, don't we? We're hearing estimates at this point.
Certainly.
We know a whole lot more than January 31st, is what we're really dealing with.
That's absolutely correct.
We got to keep that in mind, the bids are everything.
Yeah, it could all change with bids.
We, we are including in courthouse bids, a good number of alternates, which could give, you know, worse, the board can choose to accept, probably we're gonna have eight, which is more than what we like to have, in order to get the project awarded, and that's somewhere we're thinking, if our cost, based on what we're getting on the cost, and it's three quarters of a million, eight hundred thousand dollars worth of things, so if the bids come in, say, at eighteen and a half, and the board has the option to choose whatever reductions they wanna take out of that, so, so we're trying to keep that in play, just to make sure we have a warrant and a form.
Okay. Any other questions for Lynn? Good. Appreciate it. Thank you, Lynn.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to have old business.
So moved, on minutes.
Most approved, old business by Mr. Mara, second. Who's second?
I did.
Okay. You did, or you did.
I did.
Mr. Bishop.
I said Jake.
Okay, all right, Mr. Bishop.
Mr. Bishop, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there you go. Any discussion? Not all papers, aye, all opposed. Sent agenda?
Motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Cross.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All papers, aye, all opposed. Mr. John Sullivan, tax assessor.
We got three items, petition to change the assessment on the 2016 rail improvement property assessments.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion?
Item B, petition to adjust the 2016 homestead exemption supplement rule.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Bishop. All papers, aye, all opposed.
Item C, approve the final resolutions for the adware tax exemptions for general recycling, nuclear core steel, rocket, international paper, precision, medical, Denbury, and U.S. students.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All papers, aye, all opposed.
I wanna make y'all aware, the next board meeting, we're gonna have some reductions to the rule, because we had thirty-two, I believe thirty-two receipts that matured to the state of Mississippi. We just got them Friday. We've already established the rule.
Yeah.
So when you see next board meeting, there's gonna be a lot, and some of the days are just very small, since they matured to the state, just letting y'all know that's coming up, when you see a bunch of reductions.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Harrison, road manager.
Make most approved works accomplished and scheduled.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop, second. Mr. Mara, any discussion? All papers, aye, all opposed, okay.
Authorize engineering service, survey the road maintenance duty on White Road.
Survey.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Mara, second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All papers, aye, all opposed.
Authorize engineering service to prepare plans and specifications for Buckingham subdivision drainage improvement.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion?
I wanna say one thing on that, while we're here. Craig, this was the deal we talked about in Buckingham with the water and everything. I've talked to the two homeowners that we've been in that area, had people talk to those, I believe are okay verbally, but I know we wanna get some kind of paperwork to those people before we create that line right there, so, just for notes, that we're gonna need something like that to touch base before they.
Documentation, yeah.
Signing that word, dog kennel and stuff.
Yeah, right, I think we're okay, but again, that was last week.
Well, as a part of what Mr. Buster's crew is gonna be doing, they can establish what sort of drainage easement, I would assume.
Yes, we need him, we need him to construct those plans first, officially should.
Yes.
You don't know what you got till you get that part.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Have a motion, second. Any more discussion? All papers, aye, all opposed. Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. First item I have on the agenda is Flint Coal Farms, this is down in District One, and I'm recommending approval of those construction plans this morning.
Okay, motion approved.
So moved. Second.
motion by myself. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All papers, aye, all opposed.
Thank you. The next item I have. Thank you, uh, the next item that I have on the agenda is our old Fanning Road reconstruction. You know, one of these years, we're gonna complete that project, I hope. But, uh, what I have this morning recommending is approval of supplemental agreement number two and authority to have those documents signed, which your LPA will have to sign those, which is her highness over here, Ms. Laura. But, uh, anyway, this is some of the last, I'm not gonna say the last paperwork on Old Fanning, but we're getting close to the end. This pertain to a driveway at a business out there, which it was constructed and it was graded to the right away and everything was fine. Everybody was happy until one day, a truck came in there with a long body and could not make it. So what this is about is laying that driveway, which the work's already been done, laying that driveway back for that business. That's what it's about, so I'm recommending approval of this supplemental agreement number two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg's late.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
First, uh, the first several items under my section, I'd like to suggest we take as one item. Items A through F are all public hearings to be set on December 5 at 9:00 a.m., you can see them there.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, motion approved, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Item G is a public hearing for the Country Meadows Company LLC rezoning request, 5,000 Country Meadows Court, that's a District Three property. Country Meadows LLC is seeking to rezone 24, 25.84 acres from MHP Mobile Home Park to R1D. This is in connection with its contemplated development of a 76 lot expansion of the Country Meadows Manufacturing Home Community. The City of Brandon provides water and sewer services to the manufactured home community, and the City of Brandon will continue to provide those services to the expansion project as well. The applicant has agreed with the city that in connection with their expansion project, they are seeking to rezone the unused portion of their property, that's what this 25.84 acres is. This time we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Country Meadows Company LLC rezoning request. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition, we'll close that public hearing, at this time it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Next item, item H is following, it's the same applicant, uh, and now that the board has voted to rezone, we can move forward with this public hearing, which is a public hearing for Country Meadows Company LLC dimensional variance request. Uh, Country Meadows Company LLC is seeking a dimensional variance in connection with the 76 lot expansion project for the Country Meadows Manufacturing Home Community. Zoning, uh, our zoning ordinance requires that all streets within the manufactured home park be at least 24 feet in width. The site plan shows the total street width as 25 feet, which is comprised of 23 feet of asphalt and with a one-foot ribbon curb on each side of the street. And so the applicant is requesting a dimensional variance of one foot from the 24-foot street width requirement. So at this time we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Country Meadows Company LLC dimensional variance request? Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter, we'll close that public hearing, at this time it'd be appropriate to take action.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Mr. President, item I has been withdrawn by the applicant, so that matter can be dispensed with. Item J, a, a public hearing for the Bruce Dupree conditional use permit, 4085 Highway 18, it's a District Three property. Uh, Bruce Dupree is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a one-chair barber shop in an existing building at 4085 Highway 18. The property is owned by his father Larry Dupree. Mr. Dupree is approved, was approved in February of 2016 for vehicle sales at this location, the property is 2.50 acres, it's zoned A1. This time we will, uh, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Bruce Dupree conditional use permit. Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter, we'll close that public hearing, at this time it'd be appropriate to take action.
Uh, why don't you comment, uh, just to kind of clarify, I think there's been a little bit of change, Craig, between when you and Renee last spoke, I talked to Mr. Dupree. What I'm trying to achieve here is getting one sign or at least two signs side by side. I don't want, uh, multiple signs along the, the front of the property. Uh, and each of these conditional uses, Renee, it don't have to actually be one sign per se, I mean, they can do two individual signs, they need to be flush and, and next to each other. So if, if, if Bruce decides to go to a different location, he can take the sign up and then no longer have to rebuild the sign to reflect and vice versa. Uh, I know conditional uses are independent of each other, correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, if Mr., if Bruce decides to, to go elsewhere, mom and daddy can still continue to operate, likewise, if mom and daddy, something happens to them, and, and that used car lot goes, then so goes, but then Bruce still has an opportunity to fulfill his use.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right.
I make that motion on those conditions.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Bishop, any more discussion, not all, favors aye, all opposed.
Thank you, Craig. Okay, that's it, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay.
First item I have this morning is request approval of the 2016 certification for authority to expend the one mill. We received our letter from the state.
So moved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Thank you, the next item is accept the consumer price index calculations effective October 1, 2016, for both the Waste Management Residential Collection Service at a rate of 1.40 and a CPI calculation for the disposal at 1.40 percent. I estimate that this is gonna be about a $53,000 increase annually.
So moved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Thank you, the next item I have is a request authority to pay the 5% local match of $2,838 to the Lake Harbor Fire District for the 2015 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Award in the amount of $56,762, an authority to issue the check.
So moved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
I make a motion to add Mr. Franco's request to get Mr. Parker to do the survey work and whatever elevation work needs to be done on all that property back behind the tree, we do the whole thing, kind of get, have all the options available to us. Uh, I make that motion, we add that to the agenda.
Yeah, one more.
I, we have three items, can we take those?
We do it all at once.
Yes, sir, all at once. The items are what, um, Mr. Morrow just said, the, do the engineering study and the topo on the potential misdemeanor facility and parking. Uh, also advertise for bids December the 8th, 15th, and 23rd on the new courthouse facility and take, 22nd, and take the bids on January the 31st. The other item is advertisement of county resource to Pearl Pirates in the amount of $200 for a banner for the playoffs.
We can't leave that one out.
Especially after what they did to Brandon Friday night, man. We make a motion to add that to the agenda.
All right.
Second.
Motion to add, add this agenda, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Cross, all favors aye, all opposed.
I make a motion to approve all items.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All favors aye, all opposed, okay, we have a, an executive session?
Yes, sir.
I should have, why did I even ask?
Okay, I make the motion, just need going to executive session for litigation.
I want, I do want the record to reflect, we have finished this part of the meeting in 9:45 and Mr. Gaines is not here, so I don't know if there's any correlation with that.
Or, or Mr. Bishop's not present.
About two, it could be a combination.
We don't know which one it is, but.
If we didn't have executive session, we'd be heading out.
Really, that'd be chalk.
Jake ruined me, I thought, I thought we even supposed to go until 12 o'clock today, you know?
You know, maybe, you know, maybe time wouldn't change, right?
I didn't know what happened.
All right.
So maybe it's.
Let's take it going. Executive session, if you're not involved, please, uh, leave the room.
Tim, did you, did you see, uh? Of course Buster probably sent you a mail.
Good luck.
I'm sending a mad constituent to you.
Mad, okay.
See you later, Chuck.
That sounded bad. Sounded like a phone battery just got.
Yeah, it sounded like, just that nice line.
Okay, double.
This shouldn't be a lengthy deal. Shouldn't be, Danny, thank you. We have a request from a local municipal.